Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin. Today is Monday, October the twenty-third. It is seven P M. I welcome those in the council chambers as well as those that are joining us online. Before we proceed with the meeting this evening, I'd like to recognize the recent passing of Mr. Harold Winkworth. A lifelong resident of the municipality of Central Elgin, having been born and raised in Port Stanley, Harold served as the Ward Four councillor from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen and was also a candidate for deputy mayor. I enjoy meeting Harold and chatting with him after the election last year. He was a tireless volunteer in the community and lent his time and talent to numerous organizations. On behalf of the council and the municipality of Central Elgin, I'd like to extend my sincere condolences to his family and friends at this time. He will be missed. Thank you. Now, if I could ask those in the audience to stand for the National Anthem, please. Please be seated. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Weyandod and the Anishapi nations, including ancestors of Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hottusani, Atawandarak and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Counsel, does anyone have any disclosure of peculiar interest, general nature thereof? Thank you. If I could move to the adoption of the minutes, please. Questions or comments, Counselor Halpin? Better. Counselor Halpin is moving. Do I have a second or please? Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the minutes of the special meeting of council dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting of council dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and regular meeting of council dated October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three be adopted.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Thank you. Moving through to correspondence, S E one five two three, requiring action is a special events application for October vendor event. Questions or comments? Mover in a second or please? Counselor Watson, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report S E fifteen twenty-three be received for information and that council approve the special events permit for the October vendor event to be held on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three from eight o'clock A M. to twelve o'clock P M., subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance being provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of five million dollars, naming the county of Elgin and the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. And the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services.
All those in favor? Opposed and carried. Thank you. Number two, special events application for the Belmont Santa Claus Parade. Thoughts, questions, comments? Seeing none, if I could have a mover in a second or please, Counselor Bachman, Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report S E sixteen twenty-three be received for information and that council approve the special events permit for the Belmont Santa Claus Parade to be held on December third, two thousand and twenty-three from six o'clock P M. to seven o'clock P M., subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance being provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of five million dollars, naming the county of Elgin and the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. Approval from the county of Elgin regarding the temporary road closure of Belmont Road and the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services.
All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. S E one seven two three, a special events application for the Dickens Day Parade. Comments, questions before? Seeing none, if I could have a mover in a second or? Counselor Watson. Counselor Halpin, thank you very much.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report S E seventeen twenty-three be received for information and that council approve the special events permit for the Dickens Days Parade Event to be held on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three from seven o'clock P M. to eight o'clock P M., subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance being provided by the organizers of the of the event in the amount of five million dollars, naming the county of Elgin and the municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. The final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services and approval being obtained from the county of Elgin regarding the temporary closure of Colburn Street and Bridge Street for the parade route.
Um, we have a question. Counselor Watson, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, are they going to be allowed to throw frisbees off these floats again like they did at the last one? Where we had the problems? Just to recommend, just to comment. People have to be careful down there in port. Thanks.
Duly noted, Counselor Watson. Any other questions or comments? So, take note of frisbees. All those in favor? Opposed and carried, continuing with number four, which is expensive, special events application as well for the entire Port Stanley Dickens Days Weekend. Any thoughts on this one, Counselor Watson, or shall we? No? Okay, if I could get a mover. If I could get a mover in a second or Counselor Connors? And Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report S E eighteen twenty-three be received for information and that council approve the special events permit for the Dickens Days Weekend Event to be held on November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance being provided by the horse-drawn carriage company for the event in the amount of five million dollars, naming the county of Elgin and municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and held harmless. Council approval of refreshment vehicles for the event as per Bylaw two seven one one, section two exemptions. Receipt of the final list of food carts. Council approval of an exemption to Bylaw two seven one four, being a bylaw to provide for the licensing and regulation of various businesses in Central Elgin as the provision of horse-drawn carriage rides is associated with a special event and the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. All those in favor? Opposed and carried. Lastly, from economic, Elgin Economic Development, uh, letter from Carolyn Cron, our Elgin County Manager of Economic Development with a request for support of Elgin County's grant grant application, the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario. Anyone have any questions or comments on this? Our thanks to Ms. Cron for her engagement. If I could get a mover in a second or please, Counselor Halpin, thank you. Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that staff be directed to send a letter of support for the county of Elgin's grant application to the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario.
All those in favor? Opposed and that is carried. Thank you. Moving along for information, Elgin County's council highlights from October tenth. Questions or comments? If I could get a mover and a second or please? Counselor Connors and Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that correspondence item number one be received for information and filed.
All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Thank you. Moving to the reports from Central Elgin Planning Office, we have C E P five zero two three, consent application for six eight 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 Sunset Road. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. McClure?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sloan. Just, I guess, by way, uh, these two reports are, I guess, connected through consent. Ultimately, the intent of these applications is a land assembly that the the property on the corner is to be subdivided into two parcels and a portion of it being merged with the property to the north and the property to the east, uh, which can be reflected in on page three of the report that's attached to the agenda.
Thanks, Mr. McClure. There is a comment in there about it not being a building lot. Is that correct?
Uh, I believe, yes, right now, the way that it's set up, that the it's an issue with respect to setbacks in that. So in order to facilitate development, they're subdividing it to allow for development on those two parcels.
So we have two neighbors that are switching some of their lands between the two of them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions or comments from council? If I could get a mover in a second or please, Counselor Halpin, Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report C E P fifty twenty-three be received for information and that should council pass a resolution in support of consent application E seventy-seven twenty-three to the Land Division Committee. Staff recommends the following conditions. One, the applicants demonstrate that four two six three eight Fruit Ridge Line has a minimum frontage of thirty point four eight meters on Sunset Road and the existing dwelling is set back a minimum of thirty point four eight meters from the rear lot line or alternatively, the applicants obtain a minor variance to recognize any zoning deficiencies. Two, confirmation that private onsite services, septic systems and wells for six eight nine two Sunset Road and four two six three eight Fruit Ridge Line are to the satisfaction of the Chief Building Official, municipality of Central Elgin. Three, the severed land be merged with the abutting lot six eight nine two Sunset Road. Four, that subsection three or five of section fifty of the Planning Act, as amended, shall apply to any subsequent conveyance or transaction involving the subject lands. Five, the solicitor for the application is to provide an undertaking whereby they inform the committee in writing that the lands are being conveyed to an abutting property owner and thus a merger of title will take place, which merger shall include all interests held inclusive or mortgagee's interest. And six, the municipality of Central Elgin be provided with a copy of the reference plan.
All those in favor? Opposed and that is carried. Complimentary or consent consent application for six eight nine two Sunset um, is is the second item. Mr. McClure, did you wish to speak anything separately to this one, please?
Nothing further than my previous comments.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this? Seeing none, if I could have a mover in a second or for this one, please? Counselor Watson and Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report C E P fifty-one twenty-three be received for information and that should council pass a resolution in support of consent application E seventy-eight twenty-three to the Land Division Committee. Staff recommends the following conditions. One, the applicants demonstrate that four two six three eight Fruit Ridge Line has a minimum frontage of thirty point four eight meters on Sunset Road and the existing dwelling is set back a minimum of thirty point four eight meters from the rear lot line or alternatively, the applicants obtain a minor variance to recognize any zoning deficiencies. Two, confirmation that private onsite services, septic systems and wells for six eight nine two Sunset Road and four two six three eight Fruit Ridge Line are to the satisfaction of the Chief Building Official, municipality of Central Elgin. Three, the severed land be merged with part two on the draft eleven R Plan and four twenty-six three eight Fruit Ridge Line. Four, that subsection three or five of section fifty of the Planning Act, as amended, shall apply to any subsequent conveyance or transaction involving the subject lands. Five, the solicitor for the applicant is to provide an undertaking whereby they inform the committee in writing that the lands are to be conveyed to an abutting property owner and thus a merger of title will take place, which merger shall include all interests held inclusive or mortgagee's interest. And six, the municipality of Central Elgin be provided with a copy of the reference plan.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed and carried. Our next item is from the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, I S S three one two three, public consultation outcome and direction from Edward Street Stairs. Mr. Brooks, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Staff have fulfilled the direction of council to design the staircase on Edward Street as well as to facilitate public engagement. Uh, this report outlines some of the common comments that were received during the public engagement. Uh, the recommendation from staff would be to consider this project with the two thousand and twenty-four budget deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, and thank you to you and all the staff that put on the open house. I thought it was very effective. Um, this is, it's exactly what the council asked for and I think what was delivered in a um, in a way that brought a lot of information forward. So my thanks to you on behalf of council. Council, any questions? Comments? F, seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please, Counselor Halpin.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. I think rather than move to add this to the two thousand and twenty-four budget, I would like to move that we, um, do not add this to the two thousand and twenty-four budget and, uh, with it in mind that there's a community group that has put substantial money into survey and legal costs to convey this land to us. But that that amount is still much less than it would cost us to fulfill the project, that we, uh, explore paying back that amount to them instead.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Can I ask, uh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council may note in your closed session this evening that there is an item of which to receive information from the solicitor. Um, while there is is a motion, I may ask that you might want to defer your decisions on any motions until you have to hear what, um, Mr. Loeb may have to provide you.
Understood. Counselor Bachman, please.
So the motion before sent is just to receive for information?
Sorry, I'm going to defer to Ms. Greeno.
To Counselor Halpin, I have a.
This, this is strictly for received as information. This is no decision making at this time.
It says to consider and it's asked then to defer it to your budget process. So you can receive it for information. I'm making the recommendation, may council may want to, um, wait till closed session and hear the information and then go forward with any motions coming out for this decision this evening.
Counselor Bachman, please.
Okay, as long as no decisions are being made at this time, I have no problem with that move for.
Thanks, Counselor Bachman. Counselor Halpin, did you want to comment, please?
Uh, thank you through you. So you're suggesting that we add it to the budget in the same way that we had items that we chose to add and remove the last budget that we did?
Screeno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It says for your consideration of the budget. If council wishes to, um, consider this project, to consider or not to consider this project, it will have impact on your two thousand and twenty-four budget and so you may wish to have those conversations at budget time. If that makes sense for.
Thank you. Can I get a move, um, Counselor Halp, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Just, uh, in addition to that, then, um, we did have a motion on the table or a motion that carried in May where we said that we were going to discuss the Curry Boulevard project at the same time that we had more information on Edward Street. Uh, are you proposing then that we also delay that until our budget considerations?
Could be two different things, I think, but.
I'm sorry, Counselor Halpin, and partly because I was not here for the initial conversations of council. You probably informed me to answer that question for you. I may need further. Background.
Thank you, Ms. Greeno. I think today, though, if we're just looking at information, if that's okay.
Then I will withdraw my motion if you prefer.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Appreciate that. If I could get a mover in a second or please? Counselor Bachman. Can I get a second or? Counselor Graham, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Graham, that report I C S thirty-one twenty-three, Edward Street Stairs, public consultation outcome be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. I C S three two two three, Front Street and the Tendering. We're back to you, Mr. Brooks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Staff are seeking direction on tendering the Front Street project. Uh, staff are recommending that the tender be let out in mid-November with a close in mid-December. Uh, by closing the tender in mid-December, this should allow the tender to be considered by council at the last, uh, meeting in December. Uh, staff are recommending a start date for the project, uh, being for the Stanley Park Stormwater Outlet area. Uh, anytime after the contract is executed with the work on Front Street up on the hill to begin, uh, no earlier than March first of, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. The project would be substantially complete in November fifteenth with the allowance that the top lift of asphalt could be, uh, constructed in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, so that, uh, kind of wraps up, um, staff's recommendation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Questions and comments from council, starting with Counselor Watson.
Through you, Mayor Sloan, to Jeff. Um, there was talk about, uh, Infrastructure Canada, maybe, uh, funding for, uh, part of this job. Uh, how soon would we know when we'd get that grant if we could?
At this point in time, we're not sure when we will find out the results of that grant application. I can tell you that it's been well over a year that that application was submitted, so I would hope that we would have something here, um, by the end of two thousand and twenty-three.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor, uh, to Mr. Brooks. Jeff and I spoke earlier today. Um, so for clarification, um, I'd like to see council have a look at this tender, uh, in the meeting in in December. And right now, that meeting is on December eleventh. So I think that, you know, I want to ask, is it possible that you get out to tender on Monday or Tuesday of next week? So that you can receive the tenders the first week in December? You can then analyze the tenders and then you can present to council on December eleventh at the last meeting before the new year.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Mr. Brooks, please.
Uh, through you to Counselor Connors, um. Being that the meeting is December eleventh, I was anticipating we had a a meeting in December that was later than that. We will not be able to have the tender ready to go next week. Uh, we did clear it through the consultant that we would be able to have it ready by mid-November. Um, I can't confirm whether or not we would be able to have it completed the following week. Um, there would be less changes to that tender if we were to go forward with a March first date rather than a January first date. But, uh, I can't answer that question tonight exactly when we would have that, uh, tender ready. I can confirm that we would be able to have it ready for sure for mid-November, though.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Just to follow up, I think you mean mid-December. Is that correct?
We would have the tender ready to go, uh, to be advertised, uh, on bids and tenders for mid-November with a close mid-December.
Okay, so we might miss the eleventh date, but possibility of a a special meeting or something. Thank you. Counselor Connors, do you have a follow-up, sir?
Yes, I do. So, um, further discussions today, um, between Mr. Brooks and myself, we talked about, um, a number of things. Um, two of them were schedule and substitution of, uh, of material. Um, and I only spoke about that with Jeff because Counselor Watson, Counselor Graham and the mayor met with the Construction Association earlier this year and they had indicated that if it was, if there was an opportunity to perform construction during the winter months, there might be a cost savings. If there was an opportunity to substitute the material, there might be a cost savings. So we went back and forth and talked about it. It turns out that the the barricades we're putting in, the bin systems we're putting in are made of steel and only supplied by one company. So everybody's going to have to go to the same supplier for them for that material. Now, you know, if a a company that is tendering wants to be get aggressive, maybe they could have an engineer on staff that could sign and stamp something that would be different. I don't know. But it sounds like the material is what it is. Uh, the variable might be the labor, uh, in a, in some cases. Um, you know, companies are looking to keep their staff employed during the winter months and there may be an opportunity to, um, do that and and show a a cost savings. So what I asked was, in the tender format, is there a way to show for cost savings? Or is there a way to show for winter work rather than waiting until March first to start the second part of it?
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Mr. Brooks, comments, please?
Through you to Counselor Connors, um, I guess one clarification with the, uh, comment about only one supplier supplying the bin wall. Uh, there are more suppliers that supply a bin wall, however, in all likelihood, all of the contractors in this area would likely source it from one local dealer rather than, you know, look towards, uh, another province, uh, for supply of that. So there are more than one supplier. One is more local where it's likely to come from. As far as cost savings for winter work, it's it's staff's opinion that it's unlikely we would see any cost savings for winter work up on the hill. Now, that being said, uh, staff have heard comments from council, which is why we've changed up the schedule. We've originally proposed a start date for May fifteenth. We've moved that back to March first, which is the end of winter to get going up on the start, up on the top of the hill. As well, we've, uh, provided the allowance whereby the contractor could do the winter work down, uh, on Stanley Park to construct the stormwater infiltration galleries. That is less intrusive work and, uh, more able to be done during the winter months. So, um, that would be staff's recommendation as far as timing. Uh, as far as cost savings, you know, Counselor Connors and I discussed the possibility of putting in, um, provisional, um, a provisional price for being allowed to, uh, do work January first as opposed to March first. But this, that just kind of complicates the whole tender. It would be my recommendation that council pick a start date, whether it be January first or as staff recommends, March first and go with it and we'll tender for that date.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Uh, Counselor Graham, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it wasn't the, just to be clear, it wasn't the bins or that that the Construction Association was talking about a different material. It was something, and I can't recall specifically. I'd have to go back and talk to them. Uh, it was something up top that they had seen a material that had never been used or that they had never used, two out of the three that had bid for it. So that was the conversation that the three of us had with them. Um, so it wasn't the bins. Uh, I think that when we talked about this previously, the reason that we pushed it was that they had told us that they could do it um, and they had seen the specs. One of the fellows was one of the bidders. They had seen the specs and they thought they could do it or they said they could do it, um, over the course of the winter with savings, with cost savings, and that's why we pushed it. So I don't see any reason not to follow through with that and start the project or do the project over the course of the winter with some cost savings.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Mr. Brooks, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sloan. I I did meet with the Construction Association a few weeks back to try and get some clarification on, first of all, the material specifications that were being talked about. It was their recollection that the materials that, uh, were being discussed were the gravity bin walls and that their hesitancy, I And that their hesitancy, I wouldn't say hesitancy with it. It was just a few of them hadn't installed a gravity bin wall system previously, so it was a little more difficult for those who hadn't previously, previously installed one to price it out. And that's where the difficulty came in. They weren't necessarily suggesting, or at least it was conveyed to me, that they weren't suggesting that that wasn't the right solution for the project. Only that a few of them hadn't previously installed it, so it was a little more difficult to price out. Um, as far as winter work goes, I, um, asked that question as well. And it was, uh, conveyed to myself that that was more of a general comment geared towards winter construction, where winter construction made sense to be done. Um, they didn't come out and tell me that, uh, they would recommend doing winter work up on the hill. In fact, that suggestion to do the infiltration galleries down on Stanley Park actually came from the Construction Association. And staff is carrying that recommendation forward. However, staff wouldn't recommend that the work up on top of the hill start any earlier than March first.
Thank you. Counselor Connors, please. And then Counselor Graham.
Through you, Mayor. So, fair enough, and, and I understand where you're coming from. Um. I'll go back to what I said back in January of last year. You know, engineers and consultants and architects have wish lists of what they'd like to use and what they want to use and what they feel more comfortable with. Constructors, uh, typically can find cost savings when asked. So I guess I would be satisfied if we were able to somehow, and I don't know what the right wording is as far as the tender goes, uh, to put some wording in there that we would be, we would entertain looking at cost savings if they were afforded with the tender.
Thank you. Counselor Connors, um, Mr. Brooks, did you want to comment or do you want me to go to Counselor Graham?
Sorry, uh, to Counselor Connors, can you repeat the, the question specifically around, uh, cost savings there?
So, I think that we should, in our tender, we're being very specific with what we're asking for, and that's typical, and I understand that. Um, but I think there should be also an opportunity that we, there's a cost saving. So we ask for a cost savings from the bidders at time of tender. So everything is submitted to us. We have their price and their cost savings price, if there is one. There may not be one. They may say, no, you know what? Uh, there is no cost savings here. But if they can provide a cost savings, you know, something alternate to what you have, you have asked for. And we consider it through the engineering company consultant that you have, uh, working with us. And it's deemed a go, then it's savings for the constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
So this, uh, exactly what you described, uh, Counselor Connors, is what happens during the standard tendering process. Uh, we put the, we will advertise the tender out on bids and tenders. And we will take a number of questions, uh, from the contractors. And a lot of times they will ask to be able to utilize different materials, uh, a different construction method that will be vetted through, uh, the municipality's consulting engineer and either given the go-ahead and then provided to the rest of the contractors to be able to price out the, those same materials or construction methods. And that's exactly what happened. You know, during the last tender is questions came in. Staff consider those questions. If there are changes made, an addendum will go out specifying, you know, uh, this type of bin wall or approved equivalent, whatever that might be, would be allowed to be, uh, um, priced out in the tender. Rather than negotiating after the tender closes, we're able to kind of take care of some of that during the tendering process.
Just gonna follow up myself, if that's okay, Counselor Connors. Um, so Jeff or Mr. Brooks, if it was, could someone hypothetically come back and say, you know, if we tendered it for March the fifteenth and they said, well, we could save money if it was January the fifteenth, would that be a possibility or is that not how tenders work? I'm just curious. Thank you.
A- absolutely. If, uh, we put out a construction tender and specified that the contractor had only fifty working days to complete that tender, but they didn't think it was possible to complete that, uh, scope of work in fifty days, they could ask a question, ask if that could be extended to sixty-five working days. Staff along with a consulting engineer would consider that and then provide that question and answer to all of, uh, the potential bidders and make a change.
Thanks for that. Um, just one other question for me. We talked about it at the start, and I know you've got bolstering the bank versus there is a little bit of what I would say is um, not beautification, but when you told us the other day, we're learning every time we have a meeting, Mr. Brooks, which I'm sure pleases you and a lot of people in Central Oregon. Um, but we learned about two different types of roads, uh, when we were talking about East Street and the sewers. There was the sort of the standard road, and then there was a road with curbs, and there was a different budget for each. I'm, I'm not trying to, to look into a, you know, multimillion dollar project and see, um, exactly where we can cut costs, but if we weren't doing the buttressing of the bank, would we be doing the curbs and, and, and changes to the top of, uh, the hill and Front Street?
That's, that's a difficult, uh, question to answer. Um, it likely, staff wouldn't likely be proposing that in twenty-twenty-four. However, the reason that curb and gutter is being proposed on this project is to prevent, uh, surface water from washing over the side of the bank and causing further erosion, which is why a, a rural road restoration is not being proposed here.
Understood, and thank you. Thanks for the clarification. That's logical. Thank you. My questions are up. Um, any other counselors or questions? Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Um, just a, I guess a clarification point when it comes to winter construction, um. I'm, I'm just looking at this not so much as a cost savings, because I've, I don't see much cost savings starting this in the winter. For one, we have shorter days. Uh, two, there's only one entrance to that Front Street. And having any type of weather conditions, whether there's ice or snow, where do you put it? If we do have a lot of snow, where do you clean the road off to put it if they're constructing? There's a lot of variables with here that we can't control. Whereas having it start a little bit later, whether it's March fifteenth or April first, we got a pretty good idea with our Canadian winters that after April fifteenth, that we're not gonna have a lot of that. Uh, major snowfall, ice storms, whatever, coming, uh, our way. And I'm just thinking it'd be better for construction, longer days, uh, quicker as opposed to dealing with weather conditions and obstacles that are unforeseen in the earlier winter days.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. I am concerned as well that if we do this in the winter, we're not really meeting the needs of the people living on Front Street and that there will be a space of time that they're going to have to park elsewhere, and it would be enough to ask anyone with any reason for having limited mobility to park elsewhere and get to and from in the summer. But to ask anyone to try and get to their homes with their groceries or their kids or their walker or whatever else they have going on in the middle of the winter and with potentially slower work because of the shorter days, that seems like we're really making it almost cruel to the people who live there.
Counselor Graham, please.
Uh, and speaking with some of my constituents down there, they actually prefer it to be in the wintertime. So that it's not eating up their summer. But I don't see that we would have any difficulty in when we do put out the bid or the tenders, request for tenders, that we let the bidders decide on the start date. So we could say anywhere from January first to April fifteenth. And then based on what they see as cost-saving measures or their capability of doing that, they could make that decision. And I think we could write that right into the tender. That way it covers all of these issues.
Mr. Brooks.
Uh. That, uh, can be done, and that's why I, I would suggest that when we move forward with this tender, we select a date. Are we tendering for March first? Which is, again, what staff, uh, would recommend. And, you know, I haven't even touched on some of the issues that Counselor Bachman, uh, raised as far as access. That, uh, is a very difficult site to access, and once you get digging around in there, um, up in, with the silt and clay, potentially up there, you know, once it snows and gets wet, it'll never dry out until, uh, we start to get warmer, drier weather. Uh, that just makes, um, you know, access more difficult for the residents up there and may make, uh, access impossible at times for, uh, people on the far west end of that project. So, uh, getting back to the schedule, again, we would recommend that a date be, uh, picked for a start date. Now, when we suggest March first, that contractor may pick up that tender and not start March first. They may say, we're not starting here until April fifteenth. But they, understanding that they still need to get that, uh, project completed by November fifteenth.
Just to follow up, so even if it was January first, they might not start till March fifteenth?
That's correct. It would be, uh, we would present, uh, the earliest possible start date, and the contractor would pick, uh, their start date. Um, you know, based on availability, uh, of labor and, uh, materials.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Bach, uh, Counselor Graham.
Uh. Can we not dictate what the start date is? That would seem the solution to that.
Mr. Brooks.
The municipality has the ability to dictate a start date, but I think what we're looking here, looking for here is some flexibility for the contractors to be able to, you know, provide when they can provide the, um, best project. And starting on exactly March first, they may not have the ability to do that, and, uh, by keeping that open, it offers them more flexibility and, you know, hopefully better pricing.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Greenall, please.
Thank you, Jeff. And I just might add, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I think this also was brought up during the harbor dredging by offering a a broader range and allowing contractors, uh, some flexibility within those dates. You may find you have more contractors submitting bids as opposed to being restrictive in your dates, where then you are limiting to those contractors who are available.
Good point. Thank you, Ms. Greenall. Mr. Counselor Connors.
So through you, Mayor. Last point, I guess, is that I think that, you know, we should offer for them to start anytime after January first. If they choose to do winter construction, if they want to do below the hill first, whatever, I think we make it their option because they're in charge of their labor. They know when they need to keep their people employed. They know if there's any shortcomings, and I think that, uh, we could stand to reap the benefit of it if we allow, if we put the schedule in their hands and allow them to dictate us when they're gonna start.
Counsel, uh, Mr. Brooks.
And, you know, that's, uh, uh, up to council when they decide that they, you know, it wants the project to start. I would caution, however, that there sometimes are hidden costs in winter construction. Uh, we did winter construction on Southdale Line, uh, west of Sunset, uh, about four years ago, I want to say. Uh, we allowed the contractor to get going, uh, late winter. And the municipality had spent quite a bit of extra money on importing additional granular material so that residents could access their properties because, um, you know, going back, you know, we had, there was one particular weekend where numerous residents were stuck in the mud. So they had to be towed out of there. We had to come in, uh, bring, uh, I, I can't remember how many truckloads of material back in there to build a temporary access road to get them in and out of the site. You know, when we're looking at this particular site up on Front Street, we don't have that room to provide a, a temporary access here. So that's, uh, you know, I, I just want to point out that there may be hidden costs to, to the winter construction work.
Noted. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Graham.
I'd like to put the motion forward that we, uh, put the bid and tender out with a start date potentially, or the start date for the construction to decide for January one.
Do you have a second or do we have a second or Counselor Connors? Oops. Counselor Graham. Thank you. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Not a question, but a comment just before we vote that matter. I agree with Counselor Connor's statement that it is up to each business to decide what they're capable of doing and when they're capable of doing it. But I do also think that it's our responsibility as a council to decide what's safe and reasonable for our community. And if this would make things substantially more difficult or more dangerous for the people living on that road coming and going, then there should be consideration as well for that from us.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Counselor Connors, thank you.
Just to answer through you, Mayor, to answer, help, helping. So, Counselor, um, we're gonna go for tender and we're gonna ask for prices and schedules. And then, uh, Mr. Brooks's group is gonna analyze those and then present, present it to council. So we'll get a chance to look at all of that stuff when it comes in on tender and then decide from there which way we want to go and for what reasons.
Thank you. Counselor Halpin.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, isn't it true of most of our contracting that we are to take the lowest bidder in the way that it's written for tender?
Mr. Brooks.
The municipality, it would likely be required to take the lowest bidder. Um, we're not able to pick and choose, uh, unless there has to be a very solid reason to reject a tender. Um, it's, it's very uncommon for a municipality to reject a low tender. Um, unless there's some legal reason behind it. Now, uh, getting back to Counselor Connor's comments, once those tenders are closed, you know, we can, staff could potentially, um, try and negotiate a start date with the contractor, but the contractor would have the legal obligation to start whenever they wanted to after January first, and it wouldn't necessarily uh, be up to council at the time of the tender award to change that schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Connors, and then Counselor Graham, thank you.
So through you, Mayor. Um, so, Mr. Brooks, is there any way that we can put some wording into the tender document on the front-end document indicating that uh, award will be, will not only be based on price, but also on schedule? And if we do that on the front end and we indicate that in the tender, then I mean, I mean, I don't know if you can do that, but it's done normally on public tenders.
Mr. Brooks.
No, we need to, the municipality would be required to put in a schedule, uh, that the contractor would have to meet. So we could put in, you know, if it's January first, the, the project can start no earlier than January first and be substantially complete by November fifteenth with an allowance of twenty working days in twenty-twenty-five for the surface coat of asphalt. Uh, we wouldn't be able to go back after the fact and say, no, well, we've changed our mind. We want, we're not going to allow you to start till April first now. If you put January first in the documents, then they are legally allowed to start January first.
Thank you. Counselor Graham.
I think that it, it remains that, you know, if we're giving them that leeway, we're looking at cost-saving measures that we're giving them. So if they come back to us and they say that we can do cost-saving measures because we're starting in January, on January tenth or instead of January first, we're still giving them that option so that there are cost-saving measures. So I still, uh, the, I would still say that the motion is still standing. We're still trying to be fiscally responsible here. At the same time, you know, taking care of our residents and doing this work, but being fiscally responsible.
Thank you. We have a mover and a second or?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report ICS thirty-two twenty-three Front Street tendering be received for information. And that council directs staff to tender the Front Street Slope Stabilization and Road Reconstruction Project in November with a start date of January first, twenty-twenty-four. And that council allows the successful bidder to construct the storm- and that council allows the successful bidder to construct the Storm Sewer Outlet Elements in Stanley Park prior to March first, twenty twenty-four, if requested, and that council allocate the remaining cost of the project to the twenty twenty-four budget.
Counselor.
Can I just get clarification from council? Was that with a start date or as early as? Because as early as means that they have flexibility, if that was not what council was wanting.
I think it was as early as, was it not? Counselor Graham. Counselor Bachman, please.
Uh, clarity also on the Stanley Park had to be done by March first? Was that, did I hear that right?
That's on the sheet here, right?
Mayor Sloan, through you. The third line of the motion would be, and that council allow the successful bidder to construct the Storm Sewer Outlet elements in Stanley Park prior to March first, twenty twenty-four, requested.
Brooks.
I, I believe we're, the motion is for a January first construction date. Is that correct?
It is for the, for, then, then the council allows a successful bidder with respect to Stanley Park and the sewer outlets.
So I, you, you can lose the Stanley Park bit and just go with a January first start date for the project and.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Yeah. Well, let's see what we.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report ICS thirty-two, twenty-three, Front Street tendering be received for information and that council directs staff to tender the Front Street Slope Stabilization and Road Reconstruction Project in November with a start date as early as January first, twenty twenty-four, and that council allocate the remaining cost of the project to the twenty twenty-four budget.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. IS thirty-three, twenty-three, Lake Erie Region Source Protection Committee. That's yours as well, Mr. Brooks? Oh, yes, this is.
Sorry, sorry, one more.
Yeah, I read this one and, and about Mr. Piggott. So thank you.
Uh, so, uh, staff are seeking council report for Alex Piggott, manager of Environmental Services, to fill the vacancy on the Lake Erie Resource Protection Committee, which has been vacated since the retirement of another member of staff.
Absolutely. Thank you. Council question, have any questions? Seeing none, appreciate this and wish Mr. Piggott well in his new position. Could I have a mover and a second, please? Counselor Watson, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report ICS thirty-three, twenty-three be received for information and the council support appointing Alex Piggott, manager of Environmental Services, as the municipal representative to the Lake Erie Resource Protection Committee.
All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Moving on to the Director of Financial Services Treasurer, DFS two-one-two-three, request for tenders. Ms. Scoop to hurry. Did you wish to comment? Questions or comments from council, please? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a second. Thank you, Counselor Halpin, and thank you, Counselor Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin accept the tender from Royal Fence Limited for tender twenty twenty-three, thirty-five, Port Stanley Wastewater Treatment Plant fencing in the amount of sixty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars plus all applicable taxes.
All those in favor? Opposed and carried. Item number two, DFS two-two-two-three, twenty twenty-four budget request for mandate. Okay, you want to speak to that one? Thank you, Ms. Scoop to hurry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm just waiting on, do they need to share this screen? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. So they, going to slide two, the purpose of the meeting, and there's a little bit of agenda on that. I'll be talking about the operating budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five direction, capital budget, water waste, water rates direction, user fee direction, and some other considerations for direction from council, and also looking at timelines as we stand today, and then making some recommendations to the council.
Having some trouble here. Thank you.
And making some recommendations to council how we should proceed with the budget for twenty twenty-four so that we can start on the staff side to go by and then very quickly a budget responsibilities by department. Moving on to the next slide. The purpose of this particular presentation today is to seek council's direction for the development of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budget and twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine capital budget. And we have started doing this a couple of years ago where we're starting two years of operating and five years of capital. This gives us a good view going forward so that like multi-year projects have better view how much money we need and when that kind of thing. And also gives us a view in alignment with the asset management plan that we have submitted to the ministry or the province. Moving on to the next slide. So this is some, some sort of suggestions that I'm trying to make so that we can start with some kind of budget here. And for all the tax-supported ones, services, number one would be the cost of providing existing and necessary programs, basically legislated programs, the cost of delivering ongoing services at current service levels, the cost related to the growth in infrastructure that is operated and maintained by the municipality. Similarly, an estimate of assessment increases, which is the CVA, which is the, basically the assessment for the taxes, make recommendations for changes to service levels to achieve the minimum possible increase in the property taxes and also present options for potential service adjustments or non-tax revenue changes to achieve the minimum possible increase to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five net levy. So these are kind of suggestions that I would recommend that the council would consider when providing me the direction. Next slide, capital budget. Similarly, for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine, five-year capital budget based on community's highest priority needs that would consider financial affordability, financial commitment and work effort requirement in subsequent years or multi-year projects such as DMF, the impact on operating cost associated with new projects that the council may want to take on, the probability and potential consequences of asset failures that we have as per the asset management plan. And then the cost of renewal and refreshing of the assets that is also due as per the asset management plan. The financial cost and potential service impacts of differing any project cost. So I would recommend that the council directs the staff to look into all those things when they bring the budget at the lowest possible tax levy or the rates to the council. The next slide talks about the water waste, water rates direction. As we all know, that we are currently working at a financial plan for the water waste, water rates and everything, and there's studies being done. And it should be submitted to council by end of December or early January for approval because we have to get the water licenses. So I would say that council directs me to start working with the rate that are from the previous rate study, just as an assumption, and then we would align it with whatever comes later as part of the water it study that would be conducted or that is being conducted as we go.
Can I just interrupt for a minute, please?
Sure.
So I thought with respect to is it Watson or Wilson that we're doing the consulting project?
Yes.
Are they not reporting back in November?
They, they are with the rates, but the final, everything would be coming at end of December.
So we will have the opportunity to discuss.
Absolutely. We just had a meeting with them today, actually, and we are hoping that mid-November, they will meet with the committee.
Fine, thank you.
Go through that. We just had a meeting this morning. Thank you. The next slide talks about user fee. So as you all are aware, there is a lot of user fee for, you know, services that we have and we could also look for considerations where we could, instead of taxes, we could look at user fee. Sometimes there are one-time fees or something. We did change the user fees in twenty twenty-two. We were way behind if, even from our sister municipalities around the area. We are still behind a little. However, I would say that if, you know, we as a staff can come up with some kind of bringing us aligned with other system municipalities in terms of user fee, we should also look at it. And I would like that we look at from that point of view that the tax rate can go down. Our one-off services where we provide, if we have a lower fee right now, we actually could increase those kind of things, but I'll bring it to you if direction is so. The next slide, it talks about other considerations. So I would like the council to direct us also to look at any service enhancements, changes in services or new service proposal for consideration by the council. So which means as you all are aware that there is a strategic plan coming, you know, ahead. This budget will have to be aligned with that. So as you go through that exercise for strategic plan, you may come up with some projects that the council would like to perform whether this year, next year, I mean, this year, I mean, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five from operating or capital projects, we would like to align that too as well. So we'll have to kind of keep that consideration back in mind when we are doing this budget, when we start to do this budget. And then also, if possible, look at a tax rate stabilization, contribution to a tax rate stabilization reserve to improve reserve balances and to reduce the risk of cost fluctuations so that we can have a sustainable budget going forward. The next tile is, slide is about recommendations. So I'm proposing that the council direct staff to propose and present an incremental tax levy aligned with council's priorities. So what it means is that if council's priority is to start at zero, three, five, eight, whatever that percentage is, I would like to, a direction from council to give me a direction where I can start and go with the incremental, you know, proposals that, for example, if with zero, this is all you can do. If it is three percent, these are the projects that you can probably do. So ultimately, the final budget will be after your strategy plan and everything is aligned and I would go from council, but I would like to start working from that perspective if that is the will of the council. As opposed to coming up with a number and then kind of going back and forth on that.
If Counselor Connor says a comment, please.
Yes, through you, Mayor. So, Archana, are you talking about capital? Are you talking about, like, oh, you're talking about both?
Both. The overall budget. Because the levy is levy, right? It's going to be on capital and operating. And then also any changes to service level and services. There, for example, we have talked about not having the baskets, the beautification and that kind of stuff. So all those kind of services I can, if I get a direction, I can look into all the services and propose that what we can kind of reduce or if the service level will be reduced by doing this and kind of an impact analysis and provide it to the council as well. And then alternate avenues to fund projects. They were previously funded by the development charges. And this one is in relation to the Bill twenty-three. As you all are aware, this act has been enabled as of November, it has gotten the royal assent on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and it impacts the Schedule Four of the Municipal Act, which states the Schedule Amendment, Section ninety-nine point one of Municipal Act two thousand and one, to give the minister the authority to make regulation imposing limits and conditions on the powers of a local municipality to prohibit and regulate the demolition and conversion of residential rental properties under that section, which it means is that the minister could say, we haven't heard as of today, but they could say no development charges. This is the act that, that was done for the fast homes supporting that for the growth and housing in New York and Durham regions act. So we may have to think about that as well, that we may be limited in collecting our development charges going forward. As of today, we haven't gotten any directions. However, it may impact our DCs, which means it would impact where we support the, whether they are water rates or our tax rates. We support those as well. So I would like the council to direct us to look into the other avenues. If, say, DCs are zero in twenty twenty-four or we get right in the middle that we cannot collect DCs anymore, where would we fund? And how the money would be funded for the approved budget?
If I may, regardless of a government intervention or specific legislation, let's also understand that for those of us that have had a mortgage renewal from two point seven in twenty seventeen to five point seven in twenty twenty-two, which expires on November the fourteenth, they're asking me for seven point eight for one year to lock in. Secondly, because of that, I think most would agree that development is down. We're not seeing the development we saw a couple of years ago. So I appreciate that we also have the government that might be making some rules. We have buildings that might be built for rental that are going to be, you know, perhaps no development charges. So it's a bit of a perfect storm depending because we right now with interest rates being six, seven, and eight percent, depending on how long you lock in, we, we, we are facing some, some headwinds. I just wanted to bring that forward as well.
Yeah, and that's, and similarly, the interest rates that we may have to go for when, if we are doing any projects and if we have to go for any debt going forward or something like that. So that's why my previous recommendation about sustainable budgets was also there so that we can start putting a little bit on side and kind of see where we can go with that and how we can suppose.
And when you go into the, the years you had there, you were right up to twenty twenty-nine, that was specifically for capital, right?
That's only for.
Yeah, so you're going to the next council essentially, but you're looking at some capital planning and asset management, I understand.
Technically, this council would only approve one year of operating and capital, but the, everything else is approved in principle kind of thing so that we have a better view.
Thank you.
And every year we revisit, like we did that same thing last year, but twenty twenty-four and to capital or operating were only in principle. But now we are going back to them and redoing everything for twenty twenty-five, for example, for operating as well and up to twenty twenty-nine for capital. So some proposed budget process and overview with the timelines. Next slide, please. So if I get the direction today, we have already started looking at data collection, which means asking for the mandate and also some of the strategic goals with council to ensure that we have the alignment and also establishing budget development timelines. In November, December, we are hoping it will take six to eight weeks to develop a full-fledged budget for the council. And we are hoping that we can bring it back with, on a special meeting somewhere mid-December for approval. In the meantime, what we are looking at is also that the budget committee is in place and we can have some meetings to go back and forth and kind of look at different options and then kind of bring it to the whole council that this is our recommendation for the budget going forward. And then we can have a final budget in review in January and, you know, if by then we have the strategic plan and everything done, we can align it and hoping to have everything done, approved and adopted by February, the latest.
As you say, depending on the strategic plan and how we make out. Thank you.
Otherwise, it will be March.
Okay. And, and I can't see this right here in my computer's down, but with respect to public engagement, Archana, I know you've done, you know, we've done it through Let's Talk Central Elgin. Is there anything else? Like, when, when do you start with the actual engagement and what does it entail, please?
So last year, we did kind of the survey, which was posted for at least two weeks, two to three weeks, actually, and then we collected the information. However, this year, we haven't been able to do anything as of now. However, we also had some town halls and the consultations that the counselors have done and we have gotten some feedback. So I think this time it has been more personal feedback from the residents to the counselors directly and through the town halls, but we haven't done any survey or anything.
Okay. Maybe we could put that under, pin that for potential discussion item.
We, we could definitely do that.
Thank you.
And it can be done. And it can be done in parallel, like I don't have to wait to start. Moving on to the next slide, um. These are just the um, different departments who is responsible for which kind of budget and uh, I as Director of Financial Services and Treasurer will be. Uh, presenting the budget and overall budget and the Department of Finance. So that's it. Thank you. And if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Gupta Harith. Any questions or comments before we move forward? Very thorough, good to have a plan. Thank you. Oh, Counselor Graham has a question.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, so I would like to make the motion, or like to give the direction or whatever we want to say. When we're talking about the incremental increases, um, that we would start at zero, go from there, zero to four percent. Take a look at those. That would be my suggestion to start with.
Whatever council says, we will start at that and come bring it back.
Okay.
Uh, but I will, I just want to make sure that everybody understands I'll work through the budget committee and. Um, kind of regular communication with councils.
Yes.
So that uh, we can reach to something before we come here back with the proposed, but that will be discussed here and decisions will be made here on this table.
Very good. Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor. So, Archana, wh- when Counselor Graham says zero-two-four, I mean. How do these extra increments affect you? I mean, how much more work is it for your department to? Let's just say, you know, for, if we want another one of six, so how much more work is that for you guys to do?
So uh, basically what happens is that if we start with zero, for example, so we know we have a tax levy of seventeen million. We'll see what the operating cost is for twenty twenty-four and we'll tell you, this is what you're gonna get for zero, you can do maybe any capital projects. But if you go with two percent, we'll look at the capital projects that were proposed in twenty twenty-four. Are your front street and anything that we are proposing to do with your stat plan in alignment to that. You may have other projects that are, sorry, that may be in operating as well, for example, um. You may want to do, say, A B C project, right, for municipality and that would cost you thirty-five thousand dollars. Now that's an addition, so we'll add that up and come back and say, well, it increases your levy or rate or how we can fund it. Or where it would be funded from. It, it gonna be an ongoing process, it will not be one, like, one size would fit all. If that makes sense. And uh, yes, there will be work, but we are happy to do that work, so that we can reach to something really, um, you know, good for the municipality. Uh, so hard work does not affect me. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, if I could, thank you very much, very thorough, very helpful, if I could get a mover in a second or please for accepting the report. And to report back to council on the twenty twenty-four budget, Counselor Halpin, thank you, and Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson. That the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Logan received the twenty twenty-four budget presentation. And that council provide direction to administration to proceed with developing the twenty twenty-four budget based on the proposed guidelines and council mandate. And further, that staff report back to council with a proposed twenty twenty-four budget.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. Moving along on our agenda. Alonis Director of Asset Management, Fire Chief, motion staffing levels. We have a, a Counselor Halpin, please. This is under pu- uh, motions and notice of motion, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I'll just take a moment to speak to this. Um, so um. The motion that I'm bringing forward is that I would like us at least to get a high-level overview right now of. The turnover we've had in our administrative staff and I'm wondering about that mainly in two focuses. One is how it's impacting us in council and our ability to get things done here for the community. Um, and as an example of that, I would suggest that, you know, last meeting, there was a time that I had a question that really would have gone very well to a Director of Asset Management. If we had had one that I asked to Mr. Brooks because I felt that it was possible that his work had been closely enough adjacent. That he might have an answer to it and he didn't, but when I see those things, I do wonder whether some of our staff changes are impacting our. Ability to make decisions here. Um, and the other thing that I'm noticing is that sometimes it seems that our. Losses of staff are impacting the community and its ability to get services. So I am receiving emails from people saying, you know, there's a thing that I was supposed to be getting done. That is taking longer than usual because there are staff missing from this department. And when I see that, I worry that. If this is something that's universal to all of our neighbors right now and everyone is losing to other places or private sector or something else. In an equal measure, then maybe this is something we have to weather, but if this is something that is. Unique to us, then I would like us to be looking at how unique it is to us so that we can decide how we want to address that.
Thank you. Do you have a second or for your motion? Second or for the motion, Counselor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman. That council direct staff to prepare a report on administrative staff turnover, including its causes and consequences. How it compares to turnover in other communities and any other considerations material to the good governance of Central Logan.
Uh, I have a question, yeah. Um, or a comment, I guess. Uh, I think that. With this specific type of wording, I think that it falls within the HR committee's overview that. The mayor, Counselor Connors and Deputy Mayor Noble are already looking at these issues with the CAO. Um, and that's why we formed the. The uh, HR committee so that they could be tackling these issues, looking at staffing, so I'm not sure that we. Need that right at this instant, in this specific format of wording.
Thank you. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you, um, through you. I do appreciate that we have a committee and I'm sure that they are doing some work on this. But as yet, we haven't had any reports back from this committee and so we can't make. Any decisions that we can vote on as a council to take any action. Um, Counselor Graham and I did also talk briefly about whether it would be better to get an external consultant for this, given the scope of it. Um, and. I would be open to that possibility once we have at least a high-level look at this, but I think it would be important for us to know. To what degree what we are experiencing is like our neighbors and so forth before we decide about whether we want to spend money on that, especially considering. That we are already over budget for consulting and so it would be at least nice for us as a council to look and see.
Legal too, I think we're over budget for.
Right, so I think it would be better at least if we could just get a very basic report back on. The categories of staff that we're really missing and um.
So.
How quickly all of our neighbors are losing staff right now so that we can understand if this is something that's worth. Investing on consulting in.
Right. And I think that the county's having issues as are municipalities with turnover and staffing levels and um, also we have a meeting next week on the strategic plan. Which might delve into this a little bit as well as the HR committee, so um, questions or comments, anyone else, anyone further? Counselor Connors, please.
So through you, Mayor, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't know that I can tell you much about it, but I know that the HR committee is looking at. Solutions right now. We're working closely with Archana, closely with Jeff Brooks. Uh, to resolve things and closely with Robin as well to resolve things, but I don't know what we can divulge at this point.
That's a good comment. Thank you, Counselor Connors. If there's any other questions, why don't we call the vote? Counselor Watson?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it seems to me right now, everywhere in society, it's all an employee market and they can dictate what they want. And if we knew all the people that left, we could probably say, well, it's half of them are retirements, half of them are getting clo- jobs closer to home. I don't see how by taking this uh, staffing levels uh, making a report here, we're gonna. Take some of our employees and write this up when, if we're short-staffed, they don't have time to do that. I just think this is not worthwhile at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the vote, please. All those in favor of the motion? Posed. Motion's defeated. Thank you. Other business, number one, Shared Service Negotiation Committee. I think uh. Ms. Greenall, we need a couple of appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Southold is also um, engaging tonight with their council. Uh, this council has heard um, some information on the concept of sort of the shared service negotiating, uh, shared services. With so- Southold for our um, water, sorry, wastewater treatment plant. Um, we are asking to have two members of council participate in the negotiating committee.
Thank you, Ms. Greenall. As you know, we had Southold here earlier to discuss this. The deputy mayor and I met. With them uh, in advance uh, sometime in August, just in broad strokes. Um, the deputy mayor and I are happy to participate in this if that's the will of council. Counselor Graham.
That seems. Sufficient to me to have you and the deputy mayor on there. I'd make that motion.
I need a second. Counselor Connor, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Connors, that a shared servicing negotiation committee for the purpose of overseeing the negotiations. Related to shared wastewater treatment servicing with the township of Southold be established. And that council appoint Mayor Sloan and Deputy Mayor Noble to serve on the committee.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. Thank you for your confidence. Next item is to proceed into closed session. If I could get a mover in a second or. Counselor Connors and Counselor Halpin, thank you both. Oh, sorry, um. I made a little error here. Counselor, or uh, Ms. Greenall? You wished a motion to be read, is that correct? No, no, you wish for me to, or someone to give a motion. I, I forget about that. Could you explain, please? Thank you. I'm sorry for not having that written down.
Council, it's a recommendation in my speakings with the mayor for item number four on the closed agenda. That you direct myself or Nicholas Loeb, who will be here for another item, I am hoping. Is he always there? Uh, one of us to uh, clerk for that section of the closed.
Uh, Counselor Graham, would you make the motion, please?
I'll put that motion forward.
Counselor Connors will second, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you need, can we have clarity on picking which one of us? It was myself or. Since I'm speaking, perhaps you'd like to move um, this listener Nicholas Loeb as clerk.
So my question uh, through you, Mr. Mayor is, you can't clerk it, you can't do, take on that duties or you're just not comfortable doing that, doing both?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, uh, Mr. Loeb's fine.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Connors, that. Nicholas Loeb, Director of Legal Services, be directed to clerk the closed session for closed session item number four.
All those in favor? Posed and carried. Now, if I can get a mover in a second or into closed session? Counselor Halpin, thank you, Counselor Connors, thank you. Thank you very much, folks.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Halpin. The council proceed into closed session at eight twenty-four PM in order to address a matter pertaining to. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on. Fire on behalf of the municipality or local board and personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
All those in favor? Posed and carried. Five minutes, please.